All right, thank you everyone for patiently waiting. We will start our career pathways.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, good morning, everyone. My name is Briggs Topol. I'm the Outreach and Communication Specialist for Goodview County. So we have kind of moved into a committee of the whole, or as we lovingly call them a COW, which is just the acronym. And what this is, it's really just on a specialized topic. So what you just heard was the county board meeting, and they really kind of set a direction for the entire county itself. But we wanted to take this time to kind of talk about the people that are moving in the direction forward. So we wanted to talk about the public careers pathway. So we're going to have a couple of speakers come up, and they're going to talk about what they do in their day-to-day jobs, but also how they got into their day-to-day jobs. But beforehand, we wanted to provide just a... There we go. We wanted to provide just a five-minute overview, if you will, of what all government operations does. My mouse wants to work. There we go. Okay, and it seems the...
Welcome to Goodview County. Government can be complex, and so let's take this opportunity to better understand county government and the services our county provides. Counties are organized to be administrative arms of the state and conduct state mandated duties. Counties have also grown into other areas of government such as social services, parks and recreation, and economic development, just to name a few. All of these services are funded from property taxes, state and federal grants, and fees and fines amongst other smaller revenue sources. Every county is governed by the people through the election of county commissioners. Here in Goodview County, we have five county commissioners who form the county board. This board establishes policies and procedures for county operations. There are two other elected officials. The first is the county attorneys, whose duties are set by the state legislature. Some of these duties include, but are not limited to, representing the county in cases which the county is a party, advising the county board of commissioners and county officers, and prosecuting criminal matters on behalf of the state of Minnesota in Goodview County. The second position is the county sheriff, who shall keep and preserve the peace of the county. This includes pursuing and apprehending felons, being officers of the court, act as keepers of the jail, investigate deaths, and much more. The county administrator is responsible for management of the county and for coordinating the activities and operations of the various county departments and agencies as directed by the county board. In addition, the county administrator serves as the statutory clerk, economic development head, and oversees HR functions. The county human resources department is organized to include three HR managers and three HR staff members. The HR managers handle labor relations, safety, training, policy development, and discipline. The three HR staff members handle payroll, hiring and onboarding, and benefits. The county administrator also leads an administration department responsible for the creation of the budget, special projects, and county communication efforts. Court services provide investigatory and supervision services for judges of the first judicial district of Minnesota. They monitor compliance with all court orders issued by Goodview County District Court and operate the county probation services. Operating and managing several buildings across the county, the county facilities and operations department is critical. From the upkeep of the buildings and grounds, facility engineering, building operations, preventative maintenance, and security, our facility staff do it all. The Finance and Taxpayer Services Department also does it all. This department includes the assessor's office and the county auditor and treasurer. The county assessor facilitates and issues tax corrections and abatements and values and classifies all 32,000 parcels within the county. Underneath the auditor treasurer, property taxes, finance, and accounting and election administration is conducted. Health and Human Services is the largest department in Goodview County government. This department is also governed separately from other departments and is not managed by the county administrator. As state statute states, county health and human services must be governed by a Health and Human Services Board, which is formed by the county commissioners and two appointed positions. The department itself operates social services, public health, economic assistance, and finance and front desk support. Supporting all county operations and governance is our information technology department. They handle networking and servers, information security and data backup, application support for all county departments, new technology research and implementation, and much more. The Land Use Management Department is responsible for the planning and regulating all of the current and future land uses in the county. In order to best plan, the department is made up of three divisions. The first is Building Services, which administers the state building code through plan review. Second, Planning and Zoning, which implements the vision outlined in the county's comprehensive plan. And third, the Environmental Health Services, which includes septic and well permitting and inspections, along with responding to public health nuisance complaints. One of the more outward-facing departments is our Public Works Department. Three main facets create the department from highway, solid waste management, and parks and trails. The Highways Division is in charge of county road planning, construction, and maintenance. Solid Waste Management includes recycling and household hazardous waste removal. Through the Parks and Trails Board, Public Works manages the Lake Billsby Park, the Nielsen Memorial Preserve, and the Cascade Canoe and Kayak Access, along with intergovernmental trails. Our Recorder's Office is responsible for the recording of all deeds, mortgages, liens, and related documents in connection with real estate transactions within the county. In addition to the real estate activity, the office is the registrar of vital records, including birth, marriage, and death, along with military discharge papers, and is a passport agency. The County Surveyor and Geographic Information Systems Department is responsible for the preservation and maintenance of all public land survey system, which is the basis for all land descriptions, the preparation of road descriptions and plaques, county property surveys, approval of all subdivision plaques, and maintenance of the parcel mapping information and professional review for all county land description issues. Lastly, but certainly not least, is our Veteran Services Office. This office aids veterans and their dependents with obtaining potential veteran benefits from the Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs and the United States Department of Veteran Affairs. They also work as advocates for veterans and their dependents or connect them to other agencies dependent on their needs. While we have touched upon each division of our county government, this video does not fully elaborate upon each action our department takes from day to day. Thank you for listening to better understand how we work every day to serve the people of Goodview County.
That provides a very quick but very wordy description of what we all do in county government. So from here on out, I want to bring up one of our HR managers, Jessica, and she'll kind of provide you an overview as to how she got into a role and what she does.
As he said, my name is Jessica Albrecht. I'm an HR manager for Goodview County. I'm here today to talk to you about where I'm from, what I thought I would be when I was in high school, how I got to where I am today, and a little bit about what I did last week. Hopefully, that informs you and helps you take your next step. You know what? I will get there. Yep. Well... No, that's okay. So I'll just, I'll go from this slide. That's, that's just fine. That's just fine. So where I am from, I grew up in Old Fronnak, Minnesota, which is right on the Mississippi River to south of Red Wing. And I am a graduate of Lincoln High School in Lake City, Minnesota. I remember being in ninth grade and taking the class, or taking civics class, and we did a placement test, and it said what careers you should be in. My result was pharmaceutical salesperson. Come to realize, that's a legal drug dealer. Not a good fit for, for me. I remember kind of shaking my head at the results and just thinking, I don't know what I want to be when I grow up. I know that I want to do something that helps people, and I know I want to go to college. And I knew I needed to make a responsible choice about going to college because I didn't have a lot of money. And so right out of high school, I decided to go to RCTC to do my generals. Hopefully, you know, get a little bit of direction as far as where I wanted to go from there. While I was at RCTC, I was working either part-time or full-time, gaining a lot of real-world experience, even in, you know, retail careers and things like that. Once I finished up at RCTC, I should mention, RCTC gave me a lot of exposure to classes and subjects that I just wouldn't have had an opportunity to get exposure to in the small-town high school that I went to. After RCTC, I decided to transfer to Bethel University up in, up in the Twin Cities. And it's declared an international business major because I had a love of languages. After a year at Bethel, I took a summer job, and I was going to be scanning papers in the HR department of this, this company that I'd never heard of before. Got a little bit of exposure there, and after about two weeks, they offered me a full-time position. I remember calling my mom and saying, gosh, should I take it? I was, I was worried that I would start a job, you know, more of a career and not finish school. And I heard her saying, well, gosh, you'd be stupid not to. And so I ended up taking the job and started work in the HR department of this nationwide company. And thankfully, I was able to switch from being a full-time daytime student to being in their College of Adult and Professional Studies. Can you go to the next slide for me, Briggs? Thank you. So I was able to transfer to the College of Adult Professional Studies at Bethel, changed my major to human resources. I found that that was a field that I really enjoyed. And so it did take me a couple more years to finish my degree because I was going to school at night. But when I graduated, I had two years of experience in HR, something that a lot of college grad... So at that point, my husband and I, we were living up in the, up in the Twin Cities. We decided to regroup and decide, do we want to stay in the cities, or do we want to move back home where we're from? We decided to move back to Red Wing during a time when there were not a lot of careers available. And I went through a number of different interviews, and I was the first runner-up at, at a position that I was really excited about. So of course, I was disappointed. The hiring manager, you know, I thought was, was really interesting that I would like to work for them. But when I didn't get that job, they did this thing, and they started talking about me behind my back. But what they were saying was really positive. We were networking on my behalf. And so I wanted to point out the value of networking because, because that person said, hey, we really liked this candidate, and they said it to a person who could connect me to my next opportunity. That got me a full-time position in Lake City at being the HR for a manufacturing plant. So I worked there for a number of years, kind of outgrew that position, and came upon the opportunity to work at Goodview County. And so for eight and a half years, I was an HR generalist for Goodview County before. But two years ago, I got promoted to my current role, which is HR manager. So in talking about, obviously, there's lots of twists and turns on that path. If you would have asked me at 18, I would have thought I would have gone from college to career, from point A to point B. There were a lot of detours. I went to community college. I went to full-time university. I went to night school. There were a lot of different stops on my path, and had I not welcomed some of those detours, I would be in a different place than I am today. So I want to encourage you to embrace the detours because you will get thrown curveballs along the way. So can you go to the next slide? That kind of brings me to, what did I do last week? And so I think if you would have asked me at your age what HR is, I could not have told you. To make it really simple, HR is a business function that focuses on the most important aspects of any organization, and that's the people who do the work to serve. So our, our work is pretty broad. I'll keep it kind of simple and just hit a couple bullet points. We do recruiting and onboarding of new staff, hiring the right people in the right positions, doing so in compliance with the laws and regulations and making sure that we have the best people in the best places. We also work to train those individuals, and then we work to resolve conflicts. Like I said, there's a lot more to it than that, but it is work that's focused on the most important aspect of the organization. I think a theme that you will hear today is that no two weeks are ever the same. If I look back at what happened last week, it is not the same as what happened the week before that. Last week was pretty chaotic. We worked on hiring processes.
We help new employees pick their insurance claim, something that we do, but everyone needs health insurance. Everyone has questions about their retirement, and so we work to get back and meet them where they're at to answer their individual questions there. We work with compensation, making sure people are paid, they're writing off a lot of the work that they are doing. We've had conversations today about redesigning departments, because we do work and partner with department heads to make sure that our organization is having sense. And then when people are ready to retire, we move on to something else. We are there helping all people to make a smooth transition to whoever is most. So amidst all of the chaos happening at work last week, there was lots of chaotic at, at home, as well as a lot of things that I appreciate, Nancy, about this work, because I am able to have a good work-life balance.
You know, in, in one minute, I might be coaching someone, and then last week, I was able to tap out for a little while and see my third grader's choir concert, and then toggle back into, to what I was doing. And that, that's not available for all positions within the county, but it is certainly a benefit that I have come to enjoy. I'm able to do, to be present for my family, and then also do work that I find to be extremely meaningful. Before I close up and, and hand it over to the next person, I do want to circle back. I think I mentioned at the beginning, you know, wanting to be financially responsible and making good choices with education. So not something that happened last week, but definitely something that happened this year. As an employee of Goodview County, I've been here almost 11 years now. And as a public sector employee, I was able to participate in the PSLF program, which is the Public Service Student Loan Forgiveness Program. And so this year in February, I had $7,000 worth of federal loans forgiven. That is a huge benefit of public sector work, and so something I just, as we'll get to a little bit later, saving and paying for college is, is tough, and a lot of you don't know where you're at there. And so that's a huge benefit. I just want to point out that I was able to be a recipient of this, this last year. So I hope you take away from this that it's okay that, that you don't know what you want to do for your future. I hope we give you some answers, and I hope we encourage you to just embrace the detours and, and the beauty that those will bring. Sorry, it's W. Okay.
Morning, everyone. A little shorter. My name is Debbie Salmon, and I am the Office Services Supervisor at Goodview County Health and Human Services. In June, I'll be celebrating 30 years of service. When I graduated from high school, and while I was growing up, I wanted to be a dolphin trainer. Obviously, I swayed from that decision. And closer to high school graduation, I chose to obtain a career in computers. I felt it was something that would support a long-term, stable career and open up opportunities for me. I decided to attend Minnesota State Southeast in Red Wing, graduating with a two-year degree in computer programming and operations. I was able to secure a full-time job just prior to graduation as a computer operator for the American Red Cross. I was working the overnight shift and driving to St. Paul. So when I gained enough experience, I began to look for a job closer to home. I was hired as a computer operator at Citizens Insurance Company in Red Wing, and I ended my position there as a computer programmer after seven years. While I was working at Citizens Insurance Company, I noticed a job opening at Goodview County Health and Human Services for an information system specialist. The position piqued my interest, so I decided to apply for it and was thrilled to get the job, and my career at Goodview County Health and Human Services began. As an information specialist, I maintain the accuracy of the social service file systems by performing data entry, compiling reports, updating the database, checking the network backup, training staff, and backing up the front desk. Five years later, I was promoted to Information System Specialist Senior. My duties expanded, adding a technical mentoring and support role for the Social Service Department, assisting staff with their computers and software. I maintained case files and statistical reports, served as a liaison between the staff, the state, and the county IT department. And then I became the Social Service Information System Administrator, Coordinator, and Mentor. In 2010, Health and Human Services integrated with Public Health, which added to my responsibilities and my role as I began to oversee the day-to-day operations of the support staff. We relocated to St. Joseph's School in February of 2013 while our building was being remodeled. And this put into place a combined front desk and created a support staff team. I began to learn all of the, the computer software of HHS and assisted staff with technology and training. I became a webmaster, updating the website, assisted with coordination of projects for the agency, and I was included in the hiring staff for support, hiring process for support staff and became a liaison with the staff, the customers, the front desk, and the backup staff. This gave me the opportunity to be promoted to the support staff lead in 2016. In 2020, I was promoted to my current position of Office Services Supervisor. I assist in establishing policies, procedures, and coordinating work of the support staff with all the divisions of the agency. This includes training, guiding, and collaborating with staff and outside agencies, supporting internal customers and serving our external customers, which is the best part of my job. Not one day is ever the same. I am tasked with managing, planning, and organizing agency-wide projects, along with carrying out improvements for the building and the agency. This all helps set the tone and supports our values of respect, collaboration, safety, compassion, and excellence. Just a few examples of what I did last week. I prepared and completed interviews for new staff. I held check-in meetings with staff, attended meetings and collaborated with the GIS staff to finalize an internal HHS resource hub. I backed up the front desk phones, attended SSIS workforce development equity customer input committee meetings. I covered supervisor of the day, prepared and completed staff performance evaluations, scheduled staff to attend shadowing of other units, and met and scheduled meetings with our cultural liaison. And those things change every week. Nothing's ever the same, as Jessica mentioned too, which keeps the job interesting and fun. Throughout my career, I had thought about going back to school, but I was gaining knowledge and had opportunities for growth that made me comfortable with how my career was going. I feel I was able to get to where I am today by welcoming challenges, being persistent, and finding great rewards in helping people. I just wanted to mention too that Goodview County Health and Human Services offers jobs in these various positions that you may not know. So social workers, outreach workers, public health nurse and registered nurses, public health educators, case managers, care coordinators, eligibility workers, child support officers, support enforcement aides, office support specialists, case aides, accounting technicians, and system application specialists, which is our in-house IT person. So there's various jobs, lots of opportunities. And thank you for taking the time to get to know about me and Goodview County Health and Human Services.
All right, hey, everybody. I'm Alex from Public Works. The roller. Yeah, there we go. Okay, question number one. How are you guys doing today? Come on. How are we doing today? Good. All right, awesome. Well, so I want to put something for everybody to think about in this room. If I say it is raining, can, does everybody know what that means? Yeah, for the most part. All right. Well, in this picture here, what would you say it is? Is it raining? Is it not? It's a great question, isn't it? And this pretty much thing happened right over there, number 12, coming out of canyon. I was on a paving project, and it looked like this. And the spec in Minnesota, the rule says you cannot pave when it rains. I said, it's raining, man, you can't pave. And he said, that's a mist, if not a dry drizzle. So we were paving. So our job is to make sure that we kind of follow it, and we have good pavement. Obviously, the roads stuck up and are held up or whatever, so we're good. Now, Mindot thankfully has put it that says if it's puddling, you can't pave, and as you can see, puddling is there, so that's pretty good. And I think the other thing that we can all agree on that why we're here is we are trying to plan. We have a plan to have a job or a career of some sort, and we kind of all know what that means, but it might mean different things for different people as we go along. Oh, screw this all up. I'm not the... Right, there you go. Yeah, yeah. All right, that's me. That's 17 years ago. Featherstone Town Hall, County Road 1. I was a summer help for Goodview County. At that point, I was a pretty confused kid. When I heard, when I turned about 15, well, let's put, backtrack a little bit. My whole life, I grew up, and I was told I was going to be a dairy farmer. I knew where I was going to live, where my brother was going to live, where my dad was going to live. I was going to be the dairy guy, deal with the cows. My brother's going to do the machining because my dad told me I'm not good with fixing things. And then what happened is he ended up selling the cows. And he goes, well, good luck. So I went from knowing what I was going to do for my whole life to, I never even thought about a job, let alone looked into it. So then I went and like Jessica did, the career aptitude test, and they said, do you like to be outside? I said, sometimes. Do you like to be inside? I'm like, sometimes. Do you like computers? Sometimes. It just depends on the situation. Mrs. Gosh, God bless her heart, came over to me and said, you cheated. I said, how did I cheat on an opinion test? And she said, because it's even. I said, I have no idea what I want to be. I don't know what kind of jobs are or anything like that. So anyways, I talked to my first cousin, and I job shadowed him. And like I said, you guys know we job shadow us. And he said, you like to do all these things? I said, kind of. I like to do a little bit of everything. He said, well, Goodview County usually has summer help. Why don't you go see? So I walked in there. I said, hey, I'd like to apply. They said, we don't have any work for you. I said, well, can I apply anyways, just in case? And then I did. And then a kid was in a jousting accident, so they said, we can help you for two weeks. We need someone to pound steaks. I can spin a hammer, so I did that. Same point, not yet, but that's all right. Same point. At that point, I was kind of a knucklehead sometimes, and I had a good friend, her cousin. I said, you should really find me a girl from Red Wing. And he said, you bet. And I had forgot all about it. And then afterwards, after baseball practice one day, he said, hey, we're going on blind date. And I said, you're out of your mind. I'm not going on a blind date. But this all comes back eventually. We went on that blind date. Go ahead. And here's a picture of my little guy, who's bigger now, but this was one of the best worst days of my life. So maybe you guys will experience, maybe you won't. Some of you maybe have. The middle of the night, I got an elbow from like the top rope from my wife. Hey, we gotta go to the hospital. We're having babies. At this point, we had twins, numbers four and five. The third child, I almost got to deliver on Menards. I think I could have done it, but she said, get me there. So I did. So anyways, we get to the hospital. We had to go emergency C-section. And if any of you have ever delivered an animal that's dead, it's not pretty. So the first one comes out, it's like, hey, it's baby A. And they're like, oh, let's go get some oxygen to you. All right, baby B was born, came out about this color, I believe. Heads, toes, touch, dead. They run her over to the table, start doing chest compressions to get her back to life. My wife was looking at me. She's like, everything good? I'm like, yeah, it's good. We're good. Everything's good. She's like, no, it's not. Unfortunately for her, her blood pressure dropped to 60 over 40 because she had lost so much blood. So at that moment in my life, my wife was not doing well on the table. I had one dead baby, another one getting oxygen. And so fast forward a little bit, they got the baby back to life. She's a spitfire now. And we're standing there. The head anesthesiologist is standing with me, and he's watching her blood pressure every so many minutes. And I'm like, so, like, how bad is it? And he's like, oh, we're all good. I'm like, dude, I don't know how much you get paid an hour. You wouldn't be staying here with me for an hour if we were good. But he said, we are. And I said, well, it's my son's first day of kindergarten, and family's pretty important to me, so I really wanted to go. Can I go? And I said, yep. So I got to go do that, and got off. Which was great. This all kind of comes back to the job. It's working for the county. It's, it's pretty close-knit. Um, we all pick up for each other, as we saw. They talked about up here, people shift tasks, whoever's busy. And you have the security of benefits, pay, and that people take care of each other, which is important when you have a lot of people depending on you. Um, if you want to hit the next one. There we are today. Uh, that's the girl that I said I was never going to go on a date with. And here we are eighteen years later. That little one on the bottom right is the one who was born dead. And, uh, she is full of life now, very, very, very full of life. So anyways, but that is, uh, this job has afforded me to kind of do a whole bunch of different things and not be pigeonholed and provide for that. Go ahead, click it. So back to who I am and where I'm from. Well, that's where I grew up. Um, if you look by the satellite dish, that was my room right there. And that's the house I'm supposed to be at here. There's land I'm supposed to be at. I shouldn't be standing here with you guys, but I am because it's crazy, man. So now I live in Goody or Bell Creek, out by Bell Creek Town Hall, um, leaving town. I left for a couple years, but, uh, I liked it too much back here. Go ahead. So how'd I end up here? It's a great question. Well, as you know, I talked about the summer help. I, uh, after, um, learning I was going to be a farmer, kind of like football, so I went and did that. And ended up getting mono, so that, and I probably wasn't good enough anyway, so that stopped that. And then I knew everyone's like, go to college. So then I went to RCTC as a summer help for the second half, and I didn't have enough money for books. I probably should have worked a little bit harder, but, uh, just to know, don't go to school without books. You will fail if you're not as smart as me. And then they send you a really nice letter that says, you know, maybe this place isn't for you. So went back to summer help and I wasn't really sure I was going to do. And I'm like, well, I know I can at least do this and I like being outside and inside. Then I went to Saint Cloud Community College and I went and got a degree there. And so then I went to my first year and they had a job opening, or Goody did here. And I applied. I didn't get it. You know, that's fine. I had another year of school, so I went back, uh, and then another opening. I sat in with the same interview panel. If that's weird to answer the same questions with the same people. And the first thing he said when I walked in, uh, and he be, he said, weren't you here last time? I said, I was. He said, you should really do better. And I said, I'm going to try. So hopefully this works out. It was kind of nice to break the ice. So. So then I was hired on full-time and actually on four there. And then, um, I started deciding I was going to try to get my four degree from Saint Cloud State. And then I decided to get married and have kids. And then, um, I left for a little bit here, seven years, and went to Olmsted County and got a bachelor's degree while doing, um, construction inspection and right-of-way. And I got a bachelor's in administration. And now I'm back, thank God, because I born and raised this county. My family's been here forever and I love it. Close to home. And I'm going to, uh, back to Saint Mary's to get my MBA, which is going pretty well. Um, the thing that you can do with the county is pretty, pretty much anything, especially Public Works. You can, if you like driving truck, plow snow in the winter, you guys cut trees. Um, if you like doing tech work, you can design stuff on CAD if you're kind of techie and like that kind of stuff. I mean, every culvert that gets put in, every road that gets built, every bridge that happens, someone's got to go out there and identify all the trees. Someone's got to bring that up and you got to design all this stuff. So, um, I kind of like trout fishing too. So one of the things I used to love to do is we'd do bridge surveys and we'd just walk up and down the creek and take shots on the bottom, sitting near waiters in the middle of the woods, and they pay you to do that, which is kind of nice. Um, another thing we get to do is, um, I'll make it quicker. Go see Fox culverts. Anyways, so what happened in my position last week is I met some people out on the road and like all you guys know, like when you have land, it's pretty nice. And I deal with them a lot to get road projects done, so nobody, everybody can drive on the road. And you don't realize you're even driving it. That's the goal and to get everybody to have a fair deal so they get paid. Anyways, in conclusion here, you want to go last one? Um, kind of like going back to that first slide, like the rain, we all think we know what it is and how we get to the ground. But the reality is there's a bunch of different paths. Wind blows in different directions. Always looking for opportunities. Don't sell yourself short and, uh, just keep going. You can get there somehow wherever there is. If you have any questions, I think we're, we'll have them at the end, otherwise if you have some specifically for me, I'd be happy to answer them. All right. Thank you, guys.
Morning, all. I may have seen some of you a couple of weeks ago. Dan brought his class down to law day at the sheriff's office. So some of you, I see a few, you can go to sleep and I'll introduce myself again, but, uh, um, thank you, Dan, for bringing them down here and being a part of this. So, um, my name is Collins Vaxlin. I work for the Goody County Sheriff's Office, uh, currently am the captain of the Investigation Division. Um, since this is about career path, um, I didn't have much time to prepare for my speech here. So I got my, uh, production team here set up and we created a recruitment video that we're going to play right now. So, um,
Welcome to Goody County. With close to forty-eight thousand residents, it's a big responsibility to protect each and every citizen. In emergency management and communications, we are the first line of protection. Our patrol deputies act as the physical presence of the law in the county. During a crisis, our SWAT team is well-equipped to deal with the toughest of challenges. Whether on land, sky, or water, we are there to protect. During investigations, we utilize the latest technology to solve decade-old crimes. From serving as an extension of the courts to updating critical records to support those in the field, we are here to serve. We work as a unit to protect ours and your family. Because with the support we get from our community, it's hard not to feel like family. So what are you waiting for?
Join us.
Join us.
Join us.
I'm Sheriff Marty Kelly, and I invite you to join us and apply today.
Good. So who wants to join us? All right. All right. Yes, I got some people. So, um, just kind of go off the theme of, where did I come from? I'm from Canyon, Minnesota. I'm a Canyon graduated. I graduated nineteen ninety from Canyon High School. I'm the last class of Canyon. My wife is the first class of the Canyon Wannamango Knights, um, from graduating from here. I grew up just a little bit, uh, north of town here. Um, just, uh, um, just a little bit north of town over by Holton Church, um, graduated, was involved in sports here in high school. Uh, FFA four H, I see a lot of FFA shirts here, um, was, uh, a part of that growing up in there. Which leads me into what I wanted to do in high school. Um, I wanted to get out of high school. I didn't want to be in school. Um, so I also grew up on a farm. Uh, all my life, I thought I was going to be a farmer too, as a kid, following my dad's footsteps. Um, just with, uh, other things happening in life, uh, farming wasn't a choice that I could do anymore. I was interested in, uh, the military, law enforcement. Um, but, uh, just, uh, group paths and involvement with other people, getting to know some of the local law enforcement officers, um, that kind of mentored, pushed me in towards law enforcement. So I did decide to go on to law enforcement. Um, a lot of people call it a calling, um, if you're religious. Um, it was just something that drew me to there. Um, don't know, can't really explain why I joined up into law enforcement or went to a career in law enforcement. It's just something that I think it, it draws you. Um, next question. How did I get here, where I am today? Like I said, I graduated from high school here in Canyon. Uh, I went to Normandale Community College for a year. Uh, then I went to Mankato State University, uh, go Mavs, um, and graduated with a law enforcement degree and bachelor's of science. Um, after that, I, uh, attended Alexandria Technical School for the skills portion. And the skills portion is basically, I was our police academy here in Minnesota. They taught us our defensive tactics, uh, building searches, how to properly handcuff somebody, how to use a baton, uh, how to investigate a DWI crash. All that was brought and taught at Alexandria. One second. Um, so after, while I was going to school, um, at Mankato State, uh, I had to do an internship program. And I didn't know where to do that program at. Um, I was able to do an internship here at the Goody County Sheriff's Office. Uh, it was not a paid internship initially. It was see all the different divisions, ride with patrol deputies, go out onto calls just to get me exposure into law enforcement. And at the end of the, uh, the summer, I was supposed to do a paper. Um, but I was sitting in the right place at the right time. And, and a dispatcher, uh, came in and resigned to go take up a police officer position here in Canyon. And, uh, the chief deputy at the time offered me a job. So I got my foot in the door. I was, uh, a dispatcher, um, for the summer of ninety-four and continued to be a dispatcher until I was completed with my schooling. Um, and when I was all done with my schooling, I was able to pass my test and I was offered a job on patrol. And I've just worked my way through the different uh, different positions, um, what patrol offered. Um, I was a regular patrolman. I assisted with the, um, snowmobile and rec patrol. I was a canine handler for, I handled two canines. A patrol sergeant, a SWAT team member. A lot of those things that you saw on that video of the recruitment, I was be able, I had the opportunity to do them. And I'm, I'm thankful for having that opportunity to do those things. Um, because that brings me up to, what did I do last week? Uh, I relied a lot on my, um, experience on patrol, um, being a supervisor, being a canine handler, um, just going out and dealing with the public and either, um, helping them out in their situation or giving them advice. Uh, that is, uh, I've fallen back on that experience in my current position. Kind of some of the things that I did last week. Um, the previous captain, when he was asked, what, what do you do in your position? When I was interested in applying for the captain position, um, he just said, I do stuff. Um, and I found out, yes, I do all kinds of stuff. Uh, it, I can't tell you every day will be the same. Um, I know that I have to show up every day and do my work. Um, I know that's the same, but, uh, it's many phone calls, emails, uh, mentoring, um, young investigators, uh, supervise the school resource officers, um, making sure that they're doing their job, investigators are, um, completing their cases that they're following up and make sure that their, uh, cases are ready to be prosecutable or at the county attorney. Um, collaborating with other agencies, uh, Health and Human Services, other agencies to line up investigations. Um, that's just kind of a few of the things that we do. Um, this career path, uh, kind of talk, um, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to serve the community here. Um, and I think working at the Goody County Sheriff's Offices is, uh, it's a, it's a good place to work at. Um, part of me, a lot of people have left and gone that I've worked with and went on to the metro area. And some want to come back and some don't, but I have roots here in this community and that's why I chose to stay here. And I think that has, uh, helped me out over my years, um, showing up at calls at, uh, um, either to help somebody out. They know you by your, by your first name. You know them. Um, it's just, it's paid off. So, um, with that, that's kind of what I do for the sheriff's office in a nutshell. I know we are short on time. You guys got lunch? You got to get back. Oh, yeah. We got plenty of time. Any questions? Okay. If not, come join us.
Eleven fifteen? Okay. We can get through it here. All right. So, um, this is me when I was seventeen in a god-awful yellow cap and gown, wondering what I, what I was going to be when I grew up. And I'm, I'm guessing some of you are, are feeling that way as well. Um, can you go to the next slide? Um, thank you all, by the way, for participating in the, the short survey that we did. Um, it was really interesting to see the results. I think a lot of you are, are kind of, you know, one foot over here, one foot over there, not quite sure what you want to do, but have a number of different ideas. So quite a few of you are interested in obtaining a bachelor's degree. Um, some are going to join the workforce, some are associate's degrees, some are some kind of, um, continuing education or training. Um, as far as how you're going to pay for schooling, quite a lot of diversity there. I think a lot of people are hoping, um, planning on having savings. A lot of people looking at student loans and scholarships, even militaries to, to pay for their education. Um, and again, I will just reiterate that when you work in public service, there is an opportunity for your federal student loans to be forgiven after a ten-year period of service, and that's a huge benefit. Um, thank you. So, um, looking at the results, a lot of diversity in the career paths or areas of interest that people have. I've highlighted in orange those that I thought have a corollary to the work that we do at Goody County. So, um, a lot of the trades, those positions can be applicable to our facilities maintenance, um, work. Heavy equipment operators, obviously lots of healthcare, um, interest, and, and so lots of, um, careers within the Health and Human Services Division that, that could be, um, really great fit for, for a lot of you. Um, to give you a snapshot of, oh, I missed a slide, but anyway, a lot of the positions that we have hired for within the last couple of years really pertain to the different, um, fields that, that you've all expressed interest in. Um, there were a number of people who were interested in corrections or law enforcement and detention deputy, public safety telecommunicators or dispatchers, law enforcement, um, our careers that we've done a lot of hiring for over the last couple of years. Social workers, property appraisers, public health nurses, finance and accounting positions. Um, and then civil engineers and technicians are some. So, um, I know it's, it's great to hear my colleagues talk about, you know, starting their careers with Goody County when they were really young and getting their foot in the door. If you're kind of asking yourself, how could I get my foot in the door? I mean, right now, even there's opportunities for you. Um, every summer, the county looks to hire summer helpers. That's where I started, not at Goody County, but at another organization. I got to know the organization that I was working at. So every year, Public Works is looking to hire students, um, both within, um, the Public Works Division, the Recycling Center. Um, other, um, opportunities vary from year to year. Um, the Human Resources Department has had summer students before. Um, it gives you an opportunity really to get to know, um, operations and even make some connections. And then we also offer internships and those, um, again, are paid opportunities. A lot of times, um, correspond with the courses study that you're pursuing at, um, at college. Um, this year, we have opportunities in county administration. The, um, county attorney's office has hired an intern for the summer. Um, finance has hired an intern. And again, these are great opportunities to gain some real-world experience and to do some good networking. Um, I mentioned before how networking had come in handy even for me in, in finding, um, a path forward. Couple of things I would recommend in general for applying for Goody County, but this could, this could be applicable anywhere. So, um, whenever Goody County posts a job, we use our job description to post, um, what we are looking for. And so as you're getting your resume together, look at that job description and say, what have I done that I can highlight on my resume? Take a couple of minutes and make an update to your resume. The resume you use for each job application should probably look a little bit different to highlight the skills and experience that you have that are applicable to that job. Goody County has to abide by veterans preference. And so if you are a veteran or disabled veteran, you get preference in our hiring process. That means every single time we are hiring for a position, we have a set list of criteria that we are evaluating every single application against those criteria. There are no AI or no bots, um, grading the applications. Those are individuals who have, um, specific knowledge about the job who are looking at those. And so, um, I would encourage each of you to just take a little bit of time in that application process. A lot of times it's pretty easy to apply online, but giving it a little bit of extra effort, um, can really set you apart. Um, cover letter sometimes is appropriate. Um, calling your references ahead of time and letting them know the kind of job that you're applying for so that they can highlight your skills and abilities. Um, when we make that call to say, hey, is this person a good fit? Um, and then make sure that you're highlighting any kind of specialized training that you have gone through, um, that can really set you apart. Don't overdo it. We don't need the whole life story every time you apply for a job, but just make sure that you're, you're, um, being um, considerate in, in the information that, that you're putting forward. And so, um, I hope that we have given you some good information to think about as far as Goody County careers and, and just your path in general. Um, and I really appreciate you all taking the time to, to hear us this morning and would open it up for whatever questions that you may have.
Yeah. So if you have a question, just go ahead and raise your hand and, uh, we'll have our subsequent person come up and answer it for you, if you have any questions, that is. Yes, if you have a question, just go ahead and, uh, raise your hand, and, uh, we'll have our subsequent person come up and answer it for you, if you have any questions, that is. Then also the other QR code leads to a state website. And so, you can type in whatever clear you're interested in, and it'll tell you how much that clear typically makes the job opportunities available, but then also educational requirements and places that you can go throughout the state to get those educational requirements as well. So, it's kind of a, uh, it's kind of a nice little tool for, uh, moving forward and planning out your life, I guess. Okay?
Well, I'll take that. It's about to get even better. We're launching a new website later this month, so it'll get better.
Well, I'd like to thank all of our staff who came and, uh, presented. We appreciate it. Thank you for taking your time out of the day and coming on down. And if you have any questions, just don't be shy. Just walk up to any of them, when they'll, uh, even if it's the simplest question, you know, so don't, uh, don't be shy. So, thank you again, everyone.